Subcommittee of the San Diego Community Power to session 332 on Tuesday, May 12. Roll call, please. Councilmember West.
Here.
And I am here as well. Alternate member Humora from the City of La Mesa. Are there any additions or withdrawn items for the agenda? Hearing none from staff?
Nope.
Are there any non-agenda public comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar, which there is none of, and we're going to go to the regular agenda. Item number one is consideration of the 2020 Finance and Risk Management Committee schedule. I understand that there is a conflict with Tuesdays at 3:30 now from legal counsel. So we're going to look at alternate days, potentially Wednesdays or Thursdays. Councilmember West, anything better or worse for you at this point in time?
Yeah, both of those days are terrible for me, I have to admit. Wednesday and Thursdays are challenging. Normally, I meet with the airport on Thursday, and Wednesday we have council meetings, so it's, this evening on Thursday is best. So this, this, that, that is a possibility. But the reality is, is that my days are always packed, so it's not like you're, you're not gonna, yeah. I, I'm just saying, that's probably my best bet would be Thursdays, late afternoon to evening.
Okay. I think I can probably swing a Thursday afternoon as well. So if we can kind of table that and continue that discussion and try to flesh that out a little further, let's go ahead and do that.
And I would just, I would just say that please work with Sandra with, with my schedule that way, because she knows it better than I do.
Okay. And just to provide a little bit of context, we do want to set a regular schedule. We feel like there's enough discussion for this committee to have, at least through the remainder of 2020, and ideally, we do it a week or two before each board meeting. I know it feels like we just had this committee not long ago, but here we are again. And so we'll take those times into account, and then we will look for a time that works for everybody and set that as a regular standing time for this committee. So thank you.
I, I do think, Cody, I think it's, it's really important to, I am very much in favor of setting a, a date that we can just have it and schedule it up for a year, so that, I appreciate that.
Agreed. Okay, moving on to item two, which is discussion on proposed amendments to the credit and collateral arrangement.
Okay, so thank you. This is Cody as well. And I don't know if you want to take a moment, maybe just as people present, but making sure folks know who they are on the, on the Zoom screen, so that folks can see people. And I'm just gonna take a quick minute and do that. So aside from the, the committee members, you see Sebastian Sariah and Chad Colton, those are both from my team and supporting SDCP and staff in this role. And you see Sean Marshall living around there on the screen. And she's with Lean Energy and is our, one of our consultants that does all things in sync with me, helping keep this organization running as well and starting up. And then general counsel, you see Nick put his title there, which is helpful. Thank you. And that's who he is and what he does. And then the other two folks, John and Sam, are with Pacific Energy Advisors and will be presenting on the next item. So I just thought that might be helpful to give an orientation to who's who on this new digital world we're in. So for item number two, what we're looking at is a, just, I just want to provide an update since this is the finance committee, and we adopted at the last meeting, the board adopted or approved agreements for credit and banking with River City Bank, and then a collateral agreement with a group called Emerald Blue, it's a, the private local investor who wanted to contribute to helping start up SDCP and for a $5 million collateral loan to us. Being COVID times that we're in and kind of creating some changes for everybody, that funder has since wanted to pull back to providing $3 million instead of five. So since then, we've been looking at other options. We essentially need a $5 million collateral payment in order to keep River City comfortable and moving forward with all of the financing that it will be doing for us. And we're looking at a couple of different options. And one is finding a second local investor to provide the balance, the $2 million balance in order to keep the Emerald Blue component hold. Another option is looking at a separate loan from Calpine, which is, as you recall, a firm that we just last month also approved an agreement with to do our data management services. And we had a $2 million option in that contract that was available if we needed some sort of credit ever during the course of the contract that we adopted with them. And so we've been asking, working with them to see if we can increase that up to $5 million. So both of these options are in process, and I will have more information for you all by the next board meeting, if not sooner. And I just wanted to keep you all abreast of what's been changing there, and there are difficult times with, with the state of the economy and all that. So in light of all that, still having options is really great. I just want to make sure you are aware of them, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is there a public comment on this one?
Yes, yes.
Can we take the public comment and then we'll have a little discussion?
Yes, the public comment is submitted by Matthew Vassalakis from the City of San Diego, a resident of the City of San Diego. The comment is, "Dear committee members, we support whichever action the board takes to secure the necessary financing to launch San Diego Community Power. It is of the utmost importance for the board to set the path towards security and certainty and finalize the credit and collateral loans. Again, we support whatever action the board takes to achieve that goal. SDCP's launch is absolutely critical to secure our region's future." Thank you. Matthew Vassalakis, co-director of Policy and Coordination of the San Diego Community Choice Alliance. That concludes the end of that comment.
Councilmember West?
Yeah, just, just real quick. Ms. Owen, could you give me a little bit of background? How is River City handling all this?
Was that question for me or Sean?
Neither one of you. Do you?
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you said Sean.
No, I said Ms. Owen.
Oh, yes, yes. And they, I've, I've spoken, I've kept them up to date on, on everything we're working on, and actually just spoke with them about two hours ago. And they're comfortable also with either, either path that we pursue. They're looking at some of the details of the Calpine Agreement now to see if that aligns with their subordination requirements. They want to be the, the primary lender. But I think we're getting pretty comfortable there, and they're comfortable with those terms as well. They will finalize that in the next day or so, but in general, they're comfortable with any option that, that allows us to move forward.
Okay, one last question. So we, we set that $2 million line of credit in the, in the original Calpine Agreement. Is there, is there anything that we might need that for in the future to help us move forward on things?
That's a good point, and that's one of the reasons why I left that in there initially, even, even though I thought maybe we would be getting financing elsewhere. And, and it's, you know, it's an unforeseen option. I think if we do go with Calpine for the full $5 million, for example, these other funders that are now kind of waiting in the wings, I think they're not going to go anywhere, and they'd be available for additional resources in the future if we need that. We do plan on, any path we take, we plan on paying off that initial $5 million within three years. And so after three years, that opens it back up for kind of like a revolving line of credit. At that point, we can tap back into it again.
Understand. I think, I think based on that, you know, I'm not, I'm not providing direction here, but I am saying that I think that, I would like to try to figure, I'd like to try to not use that Calpine if we can, I'd like to keep as many eggs in the, in the egg basket, if you know what I mean. So, but if you need to, I mean, I'm, I'm either way, I just think if we can go another way to get to make that loan secure with River City, I think it gives us more options in the future. John, do you agree? You seem like you're chomping at the bit there to say something on this. You're on mute.
You're unmuted.
Okay. No, I, no, I'm just listening. Oh, good, I have nothing.
Perfect. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, real quick, I think it's great that a, a private party stepped up to offer us the collateral. But this is a, you know, this is a really critical time and step for us, that we got to make sure that, as, as the public commenter said, that this moves forward. And it's nice that he said, "Whatever it takes to do it." And I mean, I think that's a good approach, but this is really critical for us. I'm a little bit nervous that he's hedging things at the moment for us. So thank you, Cody, for, for giving us some options, and, you know, I'm curious as to what River City says, but I think it's really important that we, we move forward with a risk averse solution to this, because it's critical for us to get the funding secured.
Thank you.
Any other comments on item number two? So this is, this is just for information, correct?
Exactly. Just information, just wanted to keep you updated, and I will share additional information as I have it. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you. So item number three is presentation from Pacific Energy Advisors on various energy topics.
Right, so I will just introduce this, but I will let Pacific Energy Advisors dive right in after that. So one of our goals is to, on each, each meeting, each committee meeting and board meeting, start to expose the board members to all of the things it takes to get into the energy market, and all the, the actions we'll need to be taking as an organization. The compliance deadlines and procurement deadlines we have to meet, as well as the board decisions that will be coming before you. And so this is one of those first steps in having this discussion with the committee, and we'd like to do this almost every committee meeting prior to the board meeting, just kind of test it out on you. And maybe you guys can do a deeper dive, if you prefer, on some of the, the details. So we have John and Sam here, and we do have a PowerPoint that I think Sebastian will pull up when here comes. And, and we're following on the agenda. I think folks have the agenda, but these are all just for information and education, and we're happy to take comments and dialogue, but don't need any critical actions today. So John, maybe I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Cody. Again, I'm John Delessi with Pacific Energy Advisors, and so I'm going to cover a few areas, just energy procurement generally, and hopefully set the stage for us to begin assembling a resource portfolio for SDCP as we, we move towards the commencement of service in March. So first on the agenda here is a review of the, the types of energy products that SDCP will need to buy. And then we'll discuss a basic high-level timeline and overview of some of the, the board decisions that we see playing out over the next several months. And then we'll be discussing a preliminary proposal for the 2021 renewable energy and greenhouse gas-free portfolio targets. So we're talking about a proposed essentially product mix for, for, for launch. And then finally, we'll be really previewing some concepts on energy risk management and delegation of, of authority policies. We're going to be looking to develop a proposed policy and bring that to you and then to the board next month. And so today is, it's really just kind of a preview of a sample of what that might look like. If we can advance the slide. So I think we might have gone over this last meeting, but just as a refresher here, there are really four broad categories of resources that SDCP will be purchasing. So system energy, you can kind of think of this as plain vanilla power. There's no, there's no real attribute, it's just energy that is being purchased through the California Independent System Operator. It does come with greenhouse gas emissions, so there will be, for the amount of system energy that's purchased, there will be greenhouse gas emissions associated with that, which is more or less based on the emissions rate of a natural gas generator. The, the next category of a product is renewable energy generally. And so this is energy produced by qualifying renewable resources. There's a list maintained by the California Energy Commission. But this, I think most people are familiar with, with wind and solar and geothermal and biomass and so forth. And then there's this other category of GHG-free energy, which it, these resources do not meet the renewable portfolio standards requirements, so they're not renewable technically, but they are recognized as non-GHG emitting. So these would be facilities like large hydroelectric over 30 megawatts, the small hydro is considered qualifying for the RPS. Large hydro does not, but it's still GHG-free. And also nuclear power, again, not renewable, but considered GHG-free. And then the last category, and this is really a different animal entirely, it's quite, quite different from the, the other three, because this is capacity. So this is resource adequacy capacity. It's not energy. And really, the, the resource adequacy is, is to ensure that all load-serving entities, CCAS, SDCP will be a load-serving entity, San Diego Gas and Electric is a load-serving entity, but all load-serving entities more or less have to do their part to make sure that there are enough generators available in order to support grid reliability. So you really don't get energy as a, SDCP would, would not receive energy from, from the resource adequacy resources. That energy would go to somebody else typically, and the energy that's produced by those capacity resources would not show up on SDCP's power content label. So that's the mailer that gets sent out to customers once a year describing what's in the product mix, what's in the resource mix that they're receiving. So resource adequacy or RA is really quite a, quite a different concept. But we are required to, to procure that at a, at a certain level in order to support greater liability. And then similarly, I suppose the, the renewable energy is, is subdivided into categories for compliance purposes. So this is, this is for purposes of complying with the RPS program or renewable portfolio standards program. So these are the portfolio content categories one, two, and three, otherwise known as the acronym PCCC one, two, or three, or sometimes referred to as Bucket One, Two or Three. And PCC one is, is the most prevalent. This is energy that's bundled, so you're buying the energy and the renewable attribute, and it's delivered at the same time with no substitution of energy from another source. So typically, or commonly, this, these are renewable resources located within the state of California where you're buying the energy, and you're also claiming the renewable attribute. Can also be imported renewable energy as long as certain scheduling protocols are observed where there's an attempt to ensure that that power is actually delivered into California. So the PCC one is the, is the highest cost of the three categories of renewable energy, but it's also the highest value in the sense that there are no limitations on its use for RPS compliance. And generally speaking, there, there's either no or very low greenhouse gas emissions associated with these resources. It depends on the technology, but solar and wind, for instance, are zero GHG-free. Geothermal has a relatively low emissions rate, although, although it is positive. So that's, that's PCC one, that's going to be, you know, the, the majority, the vast majority of, of the renewable portfolio. Then we move on to PCC two. And this one's a little unique, but what this is, is that it's a renewable resource that's located outside of the state. And so you're, you're buying the renewable, more or less the renewable attribute from that resource. But then the energy that's actually imported into the state comes from another, another source. Typically, it's, it's a non-renewable source that the energy flowing into California is actually provided from. So it's, it's, again, like I said, it's a little bit of a, of a unique animal. And the, the benefit of using PCC two is that it's a lower cost, it comes at a lower cost than PCC one. There are limitations on the amount that can be used for RPS compliance. And there are also greenhouse gas implications, because the greenhouse gas emissions that would be, you know, kind of associated with this type of product is based on the source of the imported power, not the renewable generator. So if what's being, the energy that's actually being imported is, let's say, natural gas, there's going to be a positive emissions rate. It's possible to make sure that the imported power is GHG-free itself, so it could be, you know, nuclear or large hydro, in which case there would be no GHG emissions associated with the product. It's a little, little bit of an in-between product, and then the, the last one is PCC three, so this is the classic unbundled rec where one would simply be buying the renewable attribute or the rec and not receiving any, any energy at all that's, that's produced by that resource. So this, this offers a lot of flexibility, but it's very limited in how much can be used for RPS compliance. It is very low cost, but it also provides no GHG benefit to the, to the purchaser under the current, the current accounting rules. So those are the, kind of the three main, you know, you think of them as, as compliance categories or contractual structures of renewable energy purchases. And, you know, I think we can move on from here. So this is kind of an, an outline of the timeline, high level for the remainder of the year. We're looking to achieve a number of procurement milestones and, and, and board approvals over the next several months. This month, we're, we're starting off with a, a discussion and hopefully preliminary approval of renewable energy and greenhouse gas-free targets. You know, we need this because we're going to be starting to, you know, line up resources over the next few months, and so it really defines how much and of what type of, of resource we need to line up for procurement. And we'll be, we'll be discussing this, this element in a few minutes, the proposed targets for, for SDCP. And then next month, we'll be asking, as I mentioned before, for approval of a risk management and delegation of authority policy. We'll, we'll be talking about that more later today as well. On the procurement front, which is sort of the list of activities on the, I guess, on the, on the right side of this table in, in blue, the initial focus is going to be heavily on resource adequacy and long-term renewable energy. And, and the reason for that is really in terms of the sequencing is resource adequacy. We need to have everything under contract by the compliance deadline of October 31st of this year. And, and so we'll have to have everything for next year under contract, as well as for the local resource adequacy obligation for the next three years in somewhat declining amounts, but there is an obligation to have contracts in place by October 31st. It's also a, a, a market that is somewhat difficult, and so there's just going to be a tremendous focus and emphasis on, on putting together the, the resource adequacy portfolio, including issuing a request for offers by SDCP, participating in an anticipated request for offers issued by San Diego Gas and Electric, and just quite frankly, picking up the phone and, and working the Rolodex to, to pull together resource adequacy contracts. The other, the other short-term focus for us is the long-term renewable procurement, and this is also a compliance obligation. So under the RPS rules, a percentage of SDCP's renewable energy requirements have to be with long-term contracts, so that's contracts of 10 years or longer duration. And that obligation is measured over a three-year period beginning 2021, but it, it more or less kicks in in 21. So, you know, there's not a whole lot of lead time. Typically, you know, long-term renewable contracts are new construction type, you know, new build. Again, similar to the RA, we're going to have a lot of irons in the fire in terms of how we meet this obligation and procure, including hopefully the possible sale by SDGNE of some long-term contracts. As, as, you know, as a load moves over, they'll, they'll, they should have, they will have access. So anticipation is that they will be selling those off, and that'll be an opportunity for SDCP to, to procure some of those long-term renewable contracts. In, in August, we expect that the, the board would approve it's an integrated resource plan.
Councilmember West?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I actually should have asked it a little bit earlier. When you were, when you're going, when you're, I'm looking at the, the, you kind of made October as a, contracts need to be in place as an important part of this upcoming year, and I'm looking at this board approvals and procurement milestones, and I see execute contracts kind of in that last block, but I don't see anything, is, is it, is that something that needs to be tracked on this? I'm just, just curious. It seems, you made a point of it, so it seemed kind of important to me, and then I'm like, we're looking on here, trying to find that. So what do you think, John?
Right, so the October 31st is the, is the regulatory filing that needs to go to the CPUC, so all the contracts, you know, need to be executed ahead of that. The board action on that, I think that is anticipated to be covered in the delegation of authority.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that comment. If, if that's an important milestone, let's go ahead and highlight it.
That'd be great.
Okay. You know, the questions while we're, while we're paused here. Okay. So then I think I was speaking about the integrated resource plan. That is a regulatory requirement as well that's due September 1st this year. It was originally, I think, May 1st, but it's been pushed back a couple of times, so it's, it's now September 1st. And this will be, you know, it'll reflect SDCP's planned resources through 2030. And there's, there's a greenhouse gas emissions limit or benchmark that's been established by the, by the CPUC. And the plan will have to show that the resources will, will, will meet that benchmark. So we expect to be working on, on that draft plan over the next few months and, and ultimately bring it to the board for approval in August and file that in September. And then then also, and then in September, if, if, if all is going well, if we're successful, we, we hope to, you know, bring one or more long-term renewable energy contracts to the board for approval. This would either come out of the SDGNE RFO that we anticipate or potentially result from the, the RFO initiated by SDCP, which we're, we're expecting to, to put out in June. The, the RFO, SDCP's RFO process probably will take a little longer to, to, you know, come to, to conclusion in terms of having actual contracts. So it's likely that those, those contracts would actually come later than September, but we do think it's possible for successful with the SDG and any RFO to have contracts, so they'll are ready for approval in September. That is the, the plan and the, in the hope, anyway. And then as we get toward the end of the year, you know, we'll have an opportunity to really refine the procurement targets. We'll have much better information about 2021 SDG rates, PCIA slash exit fees, power costs closer to, you know, actual delivery. So some of what we're going to be talking about today as preliminary portfolio you know, structure, I think, can be refined and finalized as we get closer to the end of the year. You know, structure, I think, can be refined and finalized as we get closer to the end of the year. And then we'd also be looking to. Get board approval for completing the other contracts, the system energy contracts. Potentially some shorter term renewable greenhouse gas free contracts towards the end of the year as well. Go to the the next slide, please. So. So on a preliminary recommendation for starting out in twenty twenty one. Recommending the portfolio would would include the default service offering at fifty percent. Renewable energy. And five percent would be other greenhouse gas free energy. So probably large hydro. And then the remainder would be this just system energy, just kind of the the plain vanilla power. So the offering would be, you know, if you add up the the fifty and the renewable and the five percent GHG free, it would be overall fifty five percent greenhouse. Gas, non non greenhouse gas emitting resources. And then. There'd be a an opportunity, an optional product, customers could opt up to a hundred percent renewable energy. If if they if they so desired, there there would be a. Premium for that relative to the default service offering, we'd anticipate that premium. We will be talking about that when it comes to, you know, time later in the year to talk about rate setting, but we'd anticipate that premium would be. More just largely based on the incremental cost of. Of the renewable energy relative to the default product. The we're recommending that in terms of the breakout of the renewable energy that that we use the PCC two. Up to the RPS program limits. And what that translates into is. Approximately eighty two percent of the renewable energy, so eighty two percent of the fifty percent. Would be PCC one and then eighteen percent of the renewable energy would be PCC two. And again, this is. Designed just to offer some cost reductions relative to an all PCC one portfolio. And and help maximize opportunities for potential rate discounts. As I mentioned, this is this is preliminary, it would. Would give us some guidance to begin procurement, but it's it would be by no means final and as you get better information and more certainty towards the end of the year. This could be, this could be revised or refined.
Not a question.
Oh, yes.
Um, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Good job so far, but um. When LA Clean Power, when they kicked off, what were what were their? What were their benchmarks for this, for their default service center offering? Do you know off the top of your head?
I'm not sure. No, I don't. I don't know. I mean, we can certainly find that out, but I don't know off the top of my head.
You know, I I'm just kind of curious that the. We're we're. While they're, they have more committees. I mean, I think we're very similar. And I was just wondering what they kicked off on their level would be. You don't have to answer it today, but I'd like that answer in the future. And then. One of the questions that we keeps coming up is. Can this? This is the default with an option for customers, but can cities inside SD CP? Pick to be on a higher level than the default. I mean, from the city of Imperial Beach's perspective. I'm going to want to be as much as green as possible, but I also have to really be careful with cost. City of Encinitas, they're more, they're not as concerned about their cost and they're, you know, they want to make sure that they're almost. The highest clean. GHG free energy and renewable energy. So is it possible to do that?
Yeah, it it is. It is feasible to do that. There there are examples of other CCAs having done that. You know, there's a little bit of a of additional complication. Presumably there would be different rates, right? If if you if the city wanted a. A more expensive portfolios and default, presumably there would be. A different set of rates for for the customers in that city. But yeah, it is. It is feasible and, you know, from a procurement perspective, it's. It's 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 quite straightforward. Yeah, we just just need to know who's in and who's out, so to speak.
Okay, I think I think what I'm really. I think that that's something that would be great to include on this, that when you're talking about this, that. That you bring this up to the full board, because I think this is something that I've heard at least one of the other board members bring up, and I think it'd be important to have that in your back pocket. So. You can talk to that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think then if we can move to the last slide for this section.
And if I could chime in quickly, I'm sorry, I have a lot of background noise, so hopefully you can still hear me. And one thing to think about also maybe from Mark to your question around what LA launched at. And every year it's different because market prices are changing, so we won't be directly comparable for that reason. I I think they probably launched at a conservative. Level for them in that market at that time. So we'll we'll look to see what they launched at and try to provide some comparisons. I just want to put that context around it.
Well said, Cody. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Sean. Did you want to add in?
Nope, I'm just gonna, I'm hoping to have that to you by the end of this meeting. I'm looking it up right now.
Perfect. You're you're such a rock star, Sean. I just want you to know that.
Not true. It's all the rest of these folks.
All right. So over time, we do expect based on our modeling that SD CP will be able to increase its renewable energy and overall. GHG free energy content. Outpacing both the California RPS, so the kind of the minimum requirements as well as what we expect from SD G and E. Again, there's, these are, these are projections. There's nothing nothing final about these numbers. But, you know, based on current market prices and our expectations of of rates going forward. We think that it is feasible to, you know, keep pushing these these numbers up. In achieving at a sixty percent, for instance, overall greenhouse gas free content by by twenty twenty four. And again, we'll, you know, this is, this is something that. As we start putting the procurement strategy into place, there's a lot of flexibility in the in the forward years, right? So. We would, we would be looking to. Bring contracts that do include. Forward deliveries that, you know, out the next, let's say, three to four years, but it wouldn't be up to the hundred percent level. So there would be plenty of. Flexibility to revise the overall targets. Just, you know, based on, based on pricing and in other factors.
Uh, John. Sorry to interrupt again, but one, one of the things that all of us, all cities have got our cap that we need to follow to. Their climate action plan that actually has specific dates when we're going to be a hundred percent. It'd be nice if if it said somewhere on here that you have verified. That we will be able to meet the the cap goals for each one of the cities. By this date. Or, you know, so we, so we all know, so the board can immediately look at the bottom and say, okay, yes. This puts me on track to meet my climate action plan goals for the future.
Okay. We'll have to work with Cody and and perhaps Sean to incorporate that, incorporate that information.
We'll work on that. We could do that.
One more thing on this slide. The twenty twenty four SD G and E, I think it's just probably a typo that that's at forty six rather than something higher.
Okay, Sam, it's it's actually not a not a typo. Basically, we 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 had to work backwards from whatever RPS procurement plan they had submitted on there. And the twenty three and twenty four figures are directly from their plan. So. That's just not a typo.
They actually go down.
Yeah, according to the RPS procurement plan. Yeah, I I think I I'm not sure exactly what SD G and E's. Procurement future strategy is, but. You know, we're just putting on here what we see on their latest procurement plan. That's all we can do.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, and so that's that's the end of of this section. What we still have to go, it would be the preview of the risk management delegation of authority. So if there are other questions, we could pause now or we could just power through.
Can can I just ask one quick one on? Slide. This slide four. Where you talk about the PCC content and describing it. The PCC three category. Which is the cheapest one you you have listed as limited value. Is that just limited environmental value?
It's lit, yeah, that's it's limited environmental value, I'd say in a few ways. So one is that. It provides no greenhouse gas benefit to the purchaser. The other way it's limited in value is it's it's limited. In terms of like a specific quantity limit in how much can be used for RPS compliance. So that's not really an environmental. Criteria, but a. The regulatory value. And then there's just a lot of sort of. I guess. It's sort of a bad name in in many, many quarters, the the concept of unbundled recs. So I think there's some PR, there's some limit limited PR value or maybe some actual PR cost to use of of unbundled recs.
Thank you. Councilmember West, any more questions on this this segment before we move to the next?
No, I'm good. Does it, did, is there any public or anything like that? Does? Or is that all? Are we saving that to the end? I don't know. I don't, never mind. Just go forward.
Wait, I'll just add something here on the PCC three or category three or unbundled recs, whatever you want to call them. Just to remind you in our JPA, we do say we would avoid the use of these. This product. So I just want to put that out there.
Yep.
Thank you, John.
Okay, and so with this, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Sam to to walk through this section. Thank you, John. So the we wanted to talk a little bit about the risk management policy. Because one of the things we want to get feedback on from this presentation is. On the delegation of authority. So just to try to frame what risk management policy is and what the purpose of it is. So during the. SD CP's normal course of business, you'll be managing risks associated with this being in the California wholesale energy markets. And a key component of effectively managing your procurement and portfolio risks is being able to identify. Measure and control your market and credit risks. And so the energy risk management policy basically allows you to do that by. Providing the framework around which SD CP manages the various market and credit risks. And outlines the roles and responsibilities for those people who are responsible for managing those risks vis a vis. Different things, including delegation of authority. Next slide, please. So the key components of the energy market risks are these six items here. And after I name them, I'll. Give a little bit of a description for each one. The there's market price risk, there's counterparty credit risk. Load and generation volumetric risk, operational risk. Liquidity risk, regulatory and legislative risk. So market price risk is. Probably the most easy to understand. It's simply the risk that market prices can move out of. Called out of the money. So basically, it's something that if you have a position, for instance, it goes against you, or if you don't have a position, it could be. Cheaper, I mean, more expensive. But remember, market press risk can also move in your favor. So to the extent that. You have position, it also move, you could also be in the money. So it's just basically risks and fluctuations in market prices. Counterparty credit risk is the risks that the counterparties that you're actually doing business with. Are basically, you have an inability or unwillingness to perform according to their contractual obligations. So then you'd actually have to go out there and, you know, get what you need again. So that's that. What credit credit risk mainly. It's comprised of. On the load and generation volumetric risk. So let me try to break that up into maybe two components. So on the, see on the load side, so. Load volumetric risk is the risk that you. Say you, there's inaccurate forecasts of what you what you think your load may be, which could lead to, it's a inaccurate. Over hedging or under hedging, which could possibly impact your budget. Generation volumetric risk is the risk that sort of whatever, say, you have a resource that you've. A generator that you've contracted with at the end. Not delivering what you had expected. Operational risk. So operational risk is the risk. Of failure to act effectively, to to plan, execute and control your business activity. And that's something that's, you know, the delegation of authorities is supposed to help manage. It's 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 an important part of what what the the risk policy does for SD CP. Liquidity risk is a risk that. SD CP will be unable to meet its financial obligations. So basically, you think of it as the cash flow crunch type of issue. Regulatory and legislative risk is essentially the the risk that for shifting or changing. State and federal rules, policies, regulations, laws. Basically have a negative impact on SD CP. So those are the the six main energy market risks that SD CP will be facing and that will be discussing in the and addressing in the upcoming risk management policy. Next slide, please. So how do, what are the key elements of the risk management policy to try to help manage those six key risks we talked, we saw earlier? So the the first step would be to try to define what SD CP's risk management goals and principles are. And this excerpt is is almost identical verbatim out of your JPA. So we try to see what what is your goal or end. And so we, what we gleaned out of there is that you would be managing your energy portfolio with the purpose of reducing. Energy related greenhouse gas emissions. So that's sounds in line with what what we're hearing. Promoting electrical rate price stability. And fostering local benefits while minimizing risks at the same time. So that's kind of like your your mission for risk management, your your goal. For internal control principles, we basically look at that as a. Way to have business practices that are designed to. And and proprieties, accurate and timely reporting of results. But you know, facilitating attainment of business objectives. And the key principles of internal control include the segregation of duties. So that's the separation between what the front office does. The mid office does and what the back office does. And of course, the delegation of authority for procurement. You you can't just let anybody go out there and procure. Energy, you have to set up some sort of guidelines and authority levels and thresholds for that. And that's what we'll be discussing at the end here. You also need risk management business practices and a key component of this is to. Is the requirement to report risk metrics such as open positions, value at risk and credit closure on a routine basis. And you can almost view this as, you know, it's the. Routine portfolio check kind of seeing this is your portfolio. These are your requirements based upon the. Preliminary targets that you've set or the targets set. What you what we procured on behalf of that and what your open positions and risks are based on. Risk management governance. So of course, how do you actually operate this risk management and policy? So the board may delegate the oversight of this risk management committee to any existing or new committee chooses. It's done in different ways and different CCA, CCAs that we've seen or assisted with. Sometimes it's. They have different board members in addition to executive team, sometimes it's the executive team, but that's open to. Or discussion and, you know, whatever SD CP thinks is most most fitting for what it wants to do. Next slide, please. So we wanted to get a, you know, show a preview of what a delegation of authority could look like for SD CP. And I want to stress, again, this is a preview, it's a draft, it's it has no. Absolute. Bearing on what you should decide on, but we just wanted to run this by you, talk about a few items. And to see, basically get your feedback as we draft up what we think it should look like and present it in the. In the June board meeting. But the purpose of the delegation of authority, it's, so it's a tool, it's a policy tool. That allows you to basically. Execute contracts, so procure energy, if you will, in an efficient and timely manner. Right? So basically, you don't want to be having to come back to the board every, every time before you do a transaction. You want to set up some, some authority for whether it's the CEO, whether it's the COO, director of procurement, your risk, risk committee. Or the board, what, based upon the level of, say. Values or times or different things. We'll talk about each one in the next table. So that's kind of the the purpose of a delegation of authority. The the dollar amounts that we're looking at, the dollar thresholds are based on the notional value of each individual transaction. So notional value essentially means P times Q, price times quantity. The oversight of this delegation of authority. So the, the initial thought is that the DOA will be overseen and managed by a risk oversight committee. That's, that will be formed later, and it will be advisory in nature. And it could be comprised of STCP leadership. And, and as I mentioned earlier, if it's advisory in nature, some board members, or it could be just STCP leadership, you know, which that's to to be determined. And the request here again is to, you know, just maybe get some feedback on the draft. Delegation of authority. Table that we're we're going to just preview in the next slide.
Hey, hey, Sam, when you, when you said the risk oversight committee, that, that, isn't that us?
Yeah, to be clear, that is you all for now.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I mean, that's not very, and I have to admit, that's not very clear in here either, that this is. We have, you know, you've, we've already set this up and it's already in play, you know what I mean? And we've got the finance, risk and finance. I think it just should be stated in here someplace.
But I, this is Sean Marshall, I'd like to try to, really quick.
Please.
And and Sam and John, please, please correct me if I'm wrong here. I think there's also an opportunity, however, to think about a different. Rock, if you will, risk oversight committee for this specific purpose. That is not a a standing board committee. And it is comprised of. Usually the CEO, the director of power procurement, when that person comes on board, as well as. PEA folks and all the rest of it. It's very much a committee where, you know, you're, you're going through some of the nitty gritty details of. Contracts, some of that information can often be proprietary. So there's a reason why in the slide it says that the committee is advisory. So I I don't think we have to decide today, but I I would advise that you guys would leave the door open. To a separate rock that is more of an internal function. That maybe is, is a subset of this particular committee.
So there, essentially what you're saying, Sean, is that they're, they're handling the day to day decision making. And this is, and then this committee is the overall approving authority, is what you're kind of, is that what you?
That might be one way to do it. I just, I wanted, before we went off too much and said. Yes, this committee is the one, this is a Brown Act committee, and the committee we're talking about has some some different composition and is advised.
Yeah, that's a great point. I would definitely reiterate that. There's, there tends to be a lot of market sensitive information that's discussed at the Rock Committee. And it just wouldn't be appropriate, in my opinion, to. You know, do that in a public setting. So maybe, maybe that committee could report to this, this committee. I don't know. It's up to you, but yeah.
I would just. I I think. It's not, you know, just in this oversight portion, I would just kind of expand on that a little bit and kind of put in a little bit what Sean said and. And what John said. And so we have, so, so people could understand that, because I I think, I mean, I immediately went, well, aren't, aren't. Isn't this the committee that would be doing that? But now that I understand it, I think it just needs, it just needs a little bit clearer statement in there.
Fair enough.
Okay, I agree that it'd be good to flesh that out a little bit better, that this is in addition to our committee.
Okay, and we talked about that initially when we formed this committee, that for now you'd be finance and risk. But eventually, we'd have to break that out and make the risk portion, for all the reasons that they just stated, be more of an internal committee. But, but you're right, Mark, for now, you have that title.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that question. So this is a draft example, just to get a preview. Of what a DOA, and you know, this hasn't been totally fleshed out. There are different parts of this. But as a starter, so the notional values here, just to let you know that these, these are estimated. Average procurement transaction sizes, based upon what we've seen. And what we've kind of envisioned for STCP size to be doing. And just refresh everyone's memory, so STCP is estimated to procure anywhere between four hundred and fifty to five hundred million dollars annually. Just to put things into context here. So again, just very preliminary, you know, we, we put it in orange here. So for instance, the, the CEO, for instance, could have authority for, for a notional value up to fifty million. And, you know, we can do it in terms of dollar value, or we can do it in terms of tenor, right? So in terms of years, like up to one year, up to two years or three years, or we could do it a combination of both. So right now, we, we haven't broken it up by tenor. And like I said, this is draft. We just wanted to kind of show some figures up here. So. In this instance here, we're looking at the CEO having a notional value authority up to fifty million. And say the average annual total megawatts or or megawatt hours, depending on the product here. Or, you know, what you see on the screen here. So for system power, for instance, you know, you could have up, say, on the average four hundred thousand. Megawatt hours in terms of the transaction. And it's the usual term for these things are are one to three years. And in this instance, the calculation is based on, say, a three year term, just to try to see what the the maximum mark could kind of look like. And the ballpark prices that we see for that, and to come up with the notional value you see on the far right there. And so this is just to kind of give you an idea of what the different values could look like, based upon what average transaction sizes we. You know, you, you could maybe anticipate for, for, for STCP. For RA, resource adequacy, you know, that's based upon on megawatts and price on per kilowatt, dollars per kilowatt month. So again, looking at a three year term, a hundred megawatts per, per month. So twenty seven million, short term renewables, so shorter in term versus a long term renewables, obviously. But I'm saying up to nineteen million for three year term and carbon free GHG free. That's going to be a smaller transaction, so maybe up to one and a half million in notional value. So again, these are just ballpark figures and just a thought that maybe this is something that the CEO could have authority for. And again, this does not include, say, a tenor limit. So in term tenor, meaning a number of years, we could say. Some CCAs say, for instance, they say, well, we want the CEO only to have authority for up to one year. For a transaction, doesn't matter what the notional value is necessarily, but it's just more based on term. But you could be based, again, on term and by notional value. So the, so up to fifty million, and the thought maybe is maybe the risk oversight committee that we just described could have authority for up to, say, seventy five million. And again, these are just numbers we're throwing out here. And, you know, an example of something where that would come into play is. If they do a larger sized system power deal, a bigger hedge, you know, that would be over fifty million. And that would be required to risk oversight committee authority approval. And anything over seventy five million would require board approval. And that's where we, you saw the previous charts that John came up with. That he showed earlier that we had to. We thought would possibly be board approval based upon potential size. And those items would be, say, long term renewable contracts, you know. Larger, not only larger in size, but they're also quite long in tenor, right? These, these deals are, you know, ten years plus. And, you know, for a fixed price, long term renewable contract, those are normally. New build renewable projects, and they normally are minimum fifteen years, just for, for them to get financing. So on something like that, you're looking at a notion of value for up to, you know, two hundred and ten million, for instance. So that clearly requires board approval. For, if we do long term renewables based on an index plus type of transaction, and and those tend to be existing renewable contracts. For instance, they could be, say, ten years, you do, they don't necessarily have to be longer, because they don't necessarily acquire a project financing. There also is an index plus, it's just a plus component for pricing. So looking at ninety million, so again, it's still over seventy five million. And finally, just want to say on the system power side, so system power, traditionally, we're looking at. You know, the values you see above there, under the, you know, four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand for larger size. But. You saw it in the initial, the timeline that John presented, that we're looking for border approval. Probably for those system power contracts, because for your initial launch, you're going to need big, big purchases. To basically cover your first year, not just your first year, but, you know, a portion of your second year, a portion of your third year. Based upon your risk tolerance hedge percentages. And, you know, we will discuss that separately. Also, probably amongst in the Rock type of meeting in terms of, and what that means is that, for instance, if you were one year up. You want to be eighty percent hedge, two years out, sixty percent hedge, three years out, forty percent hedge, whatever those amounts are. You're going to, those, those are the bigger purchases that would require bigger. That would be higher notional value that would require order approval. So I'm going to pause here and see if, what kind of questions or thoughts you guys may have from that.
Sean. Yeah. Sean, did you want to say something that you're, you're jumped at your phone, jumped at your screen like it was a, like there was a. Something going on there.
I thought, I thought that I was unmuted for a minute. No, I just, I, all I would say here is that even though this probably looks like a bit of sticker shock to you guys. Because it's entirely different from a local government CEO or city manager threshold. PEA has done their homework on this and has identified these thresholds that are consistent with what. San Diego's load will be in terms of notional value. And I also just want to say, this is a very common practice, this delegation of authority policy and thresholds like this are very common for CCA. So with that, I'll be quiet now.
Okay, I, here, so the. I'm not the sticker, I'm not having a sticker shock, but you kept bringing up the, the term time. And I. I'm curious to see why, what is the advantage of doing it via term? Versus a notional value.
So the, the advantage of a term, and again, you know, this is a draft. And we can combine the term and the notional value, both, both of them. Because say, say up to, for instance, for this CEO authority, we could say up to three years and fifty million, for example. Or up to one year and fifty million, whatever it is. So to answer your question directly, the, the advantage of having a term of, say, one year. Even though it's no guarantee of limiting the amounts that you'd be exposing STCP to. It's, it's, it's a way to do it. But I mean, there's nothing to block, block the transaction from being a gigantic transaction for one year. But chances are, it's going to be difficult to do something like that. So that's the advantage of having a term limit. Add, add to that too, is, you know, I think the thinking for the CCAs that do, do this by, by term instead of dollar amount. You know, the idea is that, you know, there's sort of this operational period that, that, you know, staff needs to be able to run the business. And, and buy power as necessary. So like the shorter term transactions, they just need carp launch to be able to, to, to execute. And, and, and also the nature of the power markets, you know, it's not like you get a bid for system energy and that bid is good for a month. It's good for two hours max, you know, it's, it's a commodity, right? Just like the stock market is always changing. So I think that's rationale for giving the CEO authority for anything less than, let's say, twelve months. Because it's just really, you know, part and parcel of running the business. Longer term contracts, you have more time on typically. And it's more, maybe, maybe there are more policy implications there. That it would be appropriate to, you know, to bring up the chain of command.
You know, committee, committee member Herrera, I, I know you've run a power plant in, in your previous life. When you. I, I, I think that I'm very interested in doing a. Doing a kind of a hybrid between the two, because I think that might, might work better. But I'm, I'm just looking for your input. I mean, the rest of this I'm, I'm okay with. I just, that's the only thing that was kind of. That I was a little bit concerned with.
Yeah, I agree that I think the hybrid approach with the dollar value and term is the way to go. Speaking as a current city manager, it is a little sticker shock for me, because my authority is a thousand dollars, that's it. But I understand there's a bunch more zeros here. So I, I, I respect having the CEO having that authority and the ability to do that. I think that's a good idea, but I like the hybrid approach. I agree with that. My only other comment would be, so the risk oversight committee, that authority, the seventy five million. Seems close to the CEO's authority, so that may be something we want to look at. And I just, I'm not, I can't quite envision how, you know, we, we're going to have to set this up. But having the risk oversight committee in place, is that something that they could make a decision on in a matter of hours or days? So there's, need to understand a little bit more about the flexibility of that committee. And until, before we figure that out, before we decide how close that authority should be to the CEO's authority.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. And I just wanted to to point out that currently. In that approval table that John showed earlier, currently don't have. I don't know if you recall, we currently don't have the risk oversight committee approval on there anyway. Because it does not form yet, to your, to your point. Right now, we're just, it's either the CEO or the, or the board. But we could certainly take a look at how we could insert that in there, one way or another. But, but yeah, they, obviously, the the Rock Risk Oversight Committee would have to be formed before we can even roll that out. Yeah, I, I would almost ask, you know, how, is this something that maybe the, if we bring it up in the June, that the board can formally say, yes, we do form a rock. And it's a surprise of these members, for instance. You know, based on what we propose or something like that.
I have to admit, I, I think. I agree with. It seems like to me that you're, a lot of the way you're talking, Sam, is, is that this rock should be set up. And I know Cody and I have actually talked about setting up a rock in the future in me. I mean, and as much work as we're, you know, we got to split the finance and the risk committee out. I mean, is it, I mean, if we're really talking about this this much, it should be someplace previously in this, in this. PowerPoint that kind of says, this is a time when we're going to do this, or this is a time when we suggest doing this. You know, because I don't think, right now, this leaves a lot of. Well, it could happen here, it could happen there, and that, that doesn't go well in government. We, we tend to miss those when we do that that way.
So John Delessi, I would love it if you could go back in your memory banks, because John Delessi's been doing CCA work. Long before I ever arrived on the scene. And he's done startup, probably like nearly all of them now, John. A lot of the CCAs did not have rocks, especially in the early days. I know most of you now. So how did this particular issue work out? When, because with San Diego, we know it's a relatively small board. They're already tasked with a number of committees and kind of more to come. So how, how do we thread the needle on this before there's actually staff that's hired to be on this committee? And what's the, what would your recommendation be?
Yeah, that, I think, really good question, Sean. And, and I agree. I think, I think it's tip, more typical that the Rock is, is sort of stood up, you know, once the. Once the program's up and running for a bit. And, you know, it's, it's, and even some of these, these transaction sizes that are on this table, these are. These are typical of, of, of routine transactions you'd be done doing, you know, once you. these are typical of, of, of routine transactions you'd be done doing, you know, once you, once you've launched. And as Sam mentioned, you know, the first, the first, um, set of contracts, those are going to be larger. And so my experience, you know, the, the initial setup contracts, you know, they, you know, they typically, um, go to the board, at least the, you know, the, the, um, kind of the, the form of the agreement, right? And the, and the, and the concepts. Um, and then the rock kind of comes later. I think the, the one piece that I, I think we really, you know, want to, uh, be careful about though is, is the, the resource adequacy. I think we would definitely, we don't need a rock for that, but you know, I think the delegation authority is, is very important. Because there's, you're going to, in all likelihood, have a, a lot of small contracts. Um, and, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's something that has to be done pretty quickly. And there's just really, it's, it's not well-suited to an approval process, a formal approval process. So it's much better if it's under some sort of a delegation of authority. Um, but yeah, I, I, I do think the rock could come later. And, um, it would be a matter of a, you know, a kind of a combination of delegation of authority. And then just, we just determine, you know, what is beyond the CEO's authority that we need to bring to the board. Um, and then we could bring this into play, you know, next year sometime potentially.
I think that helped frames it better, saying that this is, the rocks can get stood up, say, this time next year when we're actually up and running. And if you describe the story as, well, we have to get up and running first. The board's going to make the majority of the decisions. And then the CEO is going to pick up some pieces that was, as we move along. But once we settle in, then the rock will shift into place.
Concur. I think that's a good idea. I would, the only other thing I would say is we need, I, I think we decided that let's put a term in, do the hybrid approach on this as well. And that's, I'm good with that for sure.
Agreed here as well.
All right. Thank you for your feedback. Um, I, I don't have anything further to add here unless there are, um, other questions or?
Is, yeah, the one last thing that Sam, is there anything, anything in this document, in this numbers that, that you think that we're missing that you, we need to give you feedback on? Or do we give you everything you need to go and be ready for the board next month? John or Sam?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm just thinking.
Okay, gotcha.
Sorry, sorry.
I thought I was on mute for a minute. I'm like, wait a minute.
No, no, I'm just thinking, um.
So maybe I could help with this question? That's a, that's a great question. Um, are we comfortable with the limits of fifty million for CEO? And then the rest, anything beyond fifty goes to the board for now? Is that the delegation of authority level you're comfortable with? Or do you want everything to go to the board until these items are settled? I'm hearing the, the former, but I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, yeah, the former, I would not want everything to go to the board. You know, I think that's fine for some of the longer-term high-value deals, but, um, I think there's going to be smaller ones that would be much better. Uh, just to work, um, through your authority, Cody, be much more efficient. And I think really trying to go through the board on, on some of these contracts is not even feasible because the market's moving, you know? It's, it's a tough market on, on RA, like I mentioned. And I just think we need to, um, be well-positioned to be able to execute quickly.
I, I do like the idea though, I, I think committee member Herrera is, I am, he brought it up, but I think I'm very interested in that too, why the risk and the, and the CEO are so close. And then the, why the risk and the board are like right on top of each other. It seems, that doesn't seem like a, um, a very good spread, you know? I, I would think there would be like a fifty, seventy-five and a hundred for the board or something like that. You know what I mean? It's fifty, seventy-five and seventy-five just doesn't seem right to me.
Well, it's not fifty, seventy-five and seventy, it's fifty, seventy-five and anything above seventy-five. Um, but, but yeah, your, your point's taken.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Okay. Well, maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah, that's true. I did, I missed the above. Thank you, Sam.
No, but, but, but you're right though. I think the, the rock, um, you know, again, we, we, it was here just to get your feedback and your feedback is, is was valuable. And it sounds like we'll just create that later. The only other thing I could, I was thinking of to add in addition to the, the tenor that you guys suggested is that there, there may be some, um, different variations of this, um, in the sense that it's not just the CEO. Um, maybe we, we keep it to CEO for right now, but the thought is that as, uh, maybe as STCP matures, we can add, um, you know, even further delegation, like maybe to a COO or Director of Procurement, that would be at a lower level. But other than that, I, I, I think, um, I think, I can't think of anything else right now.
I'm okay with the fifty million. Um, if we add in the term that we talked about for the CEO authority, based on, um, you know, your expertise, based on the, the forty to fifty million annually. Proportionally, I think that's appropriate to where we're at right now. And also, again, with the, the explanation and caveat, that this is what we're doing for startup. Um, to get us going, and then we'll revise as necessary and add in the rock a year later.
Yeah.
Concur with committee member Hamora.
Thank you. Okay, I, no, I think that's, that's excellent. I, I think that's good feedback for us. And I, I do believe we have what we need to, um, turn this into a proposal.
All right. Anything else for item three?
Sorry, guys, this is Sean. Um, before we move on, I just wanted to report out, uh, Councilmember West asked about Clean Power Alliance. So what I can, is that when they launched, and it should be noted that they have three power supply options. Uh, their lowest product, if you will, uh, they call lean power. It's thirty-six percent renewable. Then they have a midline, which is clean power at, when they launched at fifty-one percent, and they have a hundred percent renewable option. Today, those numbers are at thirty-six percent for the, the lower end, fifty percent for the midline. And then they also have that voluntary hundred percent option. So that's just something to be aware of. And if you have any further questions, we can research them after the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good question, Sean. Quick question. Um, the thirty-six percent, the lean option, the, the bargain, they, uh, that's basically the minimum for RPS, right? That, so that would be equivalent of a utility that bought the very minimum amount as required by the state, right?
Uh, I believe that's true, although they might've been slightly higher when they launched twenty eighteen. I think
Okay.
Twenty eighteen, it was more like thirty-four percent. But yes, in general, they're comparable to the state's RPS. They do have a slightly higher, um, carbon-free portfolio, but that's the point of that option is that that's the price-sensitive option.
Sure.
For getting customers.
Awesome. Thanks.
Can I just, um, just add on to that? So Sean, this was really, um, good information. And I think John and I were talking earlier also about this, um, about the launch and the art renewable amounts, everything. And and bear in mind that, um, you know, this is at launch, and even some of the other CCAs that have a really high renewable uh, energy percentage and GHG-free percentage, when they first launched, they were also, uh, lower. So, um, you know, you, you, it's almost as if, you, you know, launching period is, it's a, it's a very difficult time. And, you know, once you get your, your legs underneath you, you could always up it and change it the way you, you'd like to. Just wanted to, the point's made, but I would just wanted to throw that out there again.
That's great. Thank you. I, I think that's important because I think, uh, it sounds like to me that like they're just trying to get it going. You know what I mean? So, thank you.
All right. Anything else on item three? Okay, moving on to director's comments. Councilmember West, additional comments?
Um, I think there's a couple of things. I think, uh, um, as we're, I really appreciate all the work that goes into, to, to put this together as far as just on the Zoom and, and, and having to work through this. So I, um, I appreciate everybody working together. And I appreciate Cody giving me the, uh, giving me a little of a information, uh, tutorial about a lot of this ahead of time. So thank you so much for all you're, you guys are doing. And I, uh, I look forward to the day when I can see, uh, Nick wearing pants, flip flops again. So, that's it.
Thank you. My only comment is to thank my, my councilmember Baber for nominating me to be the chair of this committee.
That'll be in the notes.
All right, uh, General Counsel Nick, what do you got? Show us your pants.
I have no report.
Thank you. I believe we are adjourned at four fifty-two. Thank you all very much.
Nice job on the first.